On the House of Maine order, open prayer.
Father in heaven, we're very thankful in this season of Thanksgiving, dear Lord, there's so many things we can be thankful for, thankful for our country and of course our veterans that we've been able to celebrate, who we just continue to pray over them for their safety and watch over their families. Thankful for this community, dear Lord, that you blessed us to be able to live in and thank you for our schools and our churches in this community and even our families and you know the things that are going on in each of our lives and our families and we just have a prayer over each one, dear God. Bless this meeting and I pray you'd guide the discussion, get wisdom in Christ's name.
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve is absent. Mike Inick here, Jim McCall.
Everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And the claims? Against the claims?
Make a motion to accept the claims?
Second of all.
On favor?
Aye.
And the financials?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept the financials.
Second of all.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No public hearings. Jim King interested in purchasing radar detection signs on Main Street.
Okay, jump right on it.
I'll get that back.
Cambridge City Main Street as an organization works to help downtown and help the town through ways to build economic advancement as well as quality of place as well as historic preservation. And one of the things that we've been looking at is how do we improve, how do people find their way around town, but also how do we help if we can improve safety around town? One of those ways that we proposed to Wayne County Foundation was to obtain two radar speed communication devices like inversion, if you've seen those, the same company. Part of the grant that we did receive from Wayne County Foundation about a month ago goes to pay for a little over one of them. And our goal was, of all of what we want to do, it was about $22,000 of work and they awarded us over a little over $11,000 in a grant. And so our goal is to raise funds for the other things. For the two speed indicators that you've seen in Pershing, they cost about $3,000 each or a little over $6,000 for two. We have enough money to pay for almost both of them, but not quite. So we're looking for donations, either go through a donation process or ask the town if the town is interested in doing anything to contribute to one of them. What they are is they attach to a pole, they're about 20 pounds, about, you've seen about this big, for solar power. Some of the things they do which are pretty cool is they give you traffic accounts daily to a phone app. They give you average speed in the area where they're set. They give you top speeds at any moment in time. They have timestamps speeding. They don't take pictures of people. They don't, there's nothing like that involved. It's just a way to deter speeding, at least for those that know that they're, that they're at least somewhat being watched. So I bring it to you for two reasons. One is do you agree that we should have these in town? And two, would you want to contribute at all to them? And this isn't necessarily contributing to Main Street, it would be contributing to the purchase of the devices. So I did briefly speak with Richard about it. Do you have any thoughts? If not, I open it up for discussion.
I would ask, you know, the statistical part of it, we said it was three and a half who deserve monthly fee for that or is there annual fee?
No, there's no subscription cost for this. It's a one-time purchase.
I think Seth has some insight on this a little bit. He actually worked with the county when they put theirs up. So I would defer to him, I guess.
The ones that we had the sheriff's office, they're affordable and like that. And from my understanding, there was different levels, whether it's just a sign out and it just tells you the speed or getting stats and that costs a lot more. You can get them, or you can go and do a data dump, or you can get them set electronically. That's the most expensive way. The main issue is if it's on US 40, you do have to get permits from the state anytime it's on US 40, State Road 1. Because I remember when we did it, sheriff's office, we did it on US 35 in Economy and we quickly learned that has to be so far out. And once you go too far off, once you get so many degrees from the cars, it kind of skews, the numbers can be off a little bit. So I don't know the exact company that the sheriff's office worked with, but it was in conjunction with the Indiana criminal justice system that they had grants for and we utilized. But, and then from my recollection, I don't know, but like all the data would have to go to law enforcement because it's a speeding thing. And then law enforcement, we give reports out. But other than that, just, and you can move them. We see issues or complaints elsewhere. Some of those can be moved if we get issues like they're near the schools, we can put that out. Similar to what the school has, but maybe by the high school too or other areas, similar with county does when we get speed complaints. They've had down Boyd Road before and around this area. And we just, as we get complaints, they move them around, especially right now in Mineral Springs and College Corner with the traffic rerouting, they have them on those two ways to get data.
My question being was, does the data show they work? Does it slow people down?
It's the, so the main one, we got it to help us to learning when the peak is, when are we seeing the high speeds? Obviously it doesn't count for, if a police, when they had it on Boyd Road here, Center, it was, you know, whether or not that's a police vehicle or ambulance, obviously some increased speed. You're going to have those outliers and you have no idea who they are, but you'll kind of, and it'll give you an average speed between these hours and you can mess with different parameters to what you're looking for and all that. That way enforcement could be focused on the certain areas that are the highest.
So, you know, if you were to obtain these, who would, who would have ownership of them?
I would think it would be the town or the police department.
Just think if we needed to move them, we wouldn't have to jump through a bunch of things every time.
I think legally the town would have to be the ones approving, put it up because it is affecting traffic and like he says, going to law enforcement, a private organization in spite of your good wishes couldn't just do it on their own.
We don't want to operate them. We wanted to provide the funds to the town. And plus, you know, move them to your desire.
So would the police department recommend it then if financially available?
I wouldn't be opposed to it. I don't know much about the statistical stuff and all that that they do. I don't have experience with that, but would it be a deterrent, I believe, at least some?
Jim, have you had a discussion with the state then?
Yeah, I haven't, but I will. I'll take care of that. And I can talk to Ken then about what they say. I don't know if it's a permit or what it is.
The permit would be through the state. Anytime you're on State Road or US Highway, anytime you put something, you'd have to get a permit from the state. Similar to like what Pershing had to do.
I would maybe start with Susie Hall up here, our office. She's one that does like our canal days permits and things for her. So she may not be the one to do it, but she can probably point in the right direction.
So who gets the information from, like the one at the elementary?
To my knowledge, that doesn't, that doesn't transmit any information at all.
There's different levels. You could have ones that simply show your speed, then like the next level would be ones where you can probably go, you'd have physically go and download the data and then you take it back to your, our office or something like that. And then the other one is like where it would be via a remote link or whatever, cell phone or whatever, and it would send the data that way to your server.
And Pershing doesn't have data either.
I can't speak for them. I don't know what they have.
I'm not sure either. I've not heard, heard any mention of it, so I don't know, but...
It is the same device I'm looking at is the one they have. And it comes with recording of statistics in both directions of traffic, which is interesting. Vehicle counts, average and maximum speeds, timestamps, and whatever these percentiles mean. And it comes to you through Bluetooth or downloaded by USB or 3G, 4G on your phone. So, and that's included in the price. Two-year warranty, solar powered.
What's the total cost to you?
I'm waiting for a quote, but they're $29.99 a piece, I believe, but they have bundled deals for two. And again, we have the funds to pay for them, but we were, through the foundation grant, they are looking for us to get support. So I don't have a fixed number for you yet, or for whoever we ask for money.
Did I tell you that $22,000 you mentioned, that wasn't just for this project, that's for a number of things that Main Street's doing then?
Yes, it includes website, it'll include guided QR codes around so you know where you are, signage. They're called Wayfair signs in town. If you see them around towns, they say this way to the school, this way to the park, this way to whatever. It's a set of, a set of things like that. Oh, and billboard, and to provide billboard spending to advertise Cambridge City and the downtown on 70. We are going to do that now and the cost of that is being borne by only a handful of people. So Main Street's going to be helping with that.
Any questions or comments?
So the question right now is, do we want you to continue, because we don't know what the cost would be or anything right now, right?
Right. Well, I've given you probably a ballpark within a few hundred dollars, but I don't have the exact price.
What company is that?
Elan City, E-L-A-N-C-I-T-Y.
I can also try and reach out to the vendors that I know that have it. We went through and see if the pricing's similar or whether or not they give any better pricing to law enforcement.
Yeah, we're in no hurry to do it right away. It's just the funding just came in. I just wanted to introduce it to you and then go through the steps.
So we pay what he has more information.
At least a better price.
At least you wanted to pursue. You're not shutting the door.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to give them anything definite time. Yeah, I think we should go ahead and pursue that and see what we can do.
Okay.
Certainly can't hurt anything. When I see those things, I always at least check my speed. It's just second nature. So it can't hurt anything.
Okay, I'll do it. Thanks.
Tony Pitzer wants to purchase area owned by the town, just upstream.
Correct.
Yeah, I actually bought a copy of the property. You guys had looked at it or not? It's just a little piece connected to, I just purchased a piece and it's connected to.
Do you, you do have copies?
Yeah.
I know, at least they can look at it and see what.
All right, thanks Tom.
Ken, do you know all this areas there?
Do you mow it now or just?
I keep it cleaned up, yeah. They pretty much mow it there really. It's a flood area.
That's right along the river there, isn't it?
Yeah.
There used to be a house in there.
Not that I ever knew of.
Oh, Cassie, isn't it? The river.
I just purchased the property to use it.
I don't see where you live.
This is behind Central School back in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Say it's a flood zone?
I mean, it floods.
Park does too, though.
Yeah.
You'll recall the procedure is if you want to pursue this, you have to make the determination that it's excess ground that the town no longer wants or needs for the future, advertise it and you can give notice to the public as well as adjoining property owner and give some preference to adjoining property owner depending on what bids come in, but that's the procedure. We've done that a couple times.
Could you come up here a minute and just shut? Okay, your house and that.
Okay, this is me right here. Okay, there used to be an alley that come this way, right here. Okay, the school is actually here. My uncle Paul has this house and this house. I just purchased, purchased this piece.
Oh, so you have that piece?
Yes, I just bought that. That's what they were.
Okay.
And then this piece here connects to it. This is my house.
So that would connect your land?
The river runs right through here.
Yeah. So this would connect your, your land all the way across here? Yeah, you have a continuous piece on it.
Yeah, there's one piece right in the center that I don't own.
You're on both sides. There isn't even really a neighbor really?
Yeah, there's not even a neighbor or nothing there. It's just about a little section of woods, a little shake.
Do we still, do we still own the alley, the right away in that old alley that was there or has that been given?
I think that alley is just, it's still open, I guess. I don't know. You guys have a piece of property here, somewhere right here. And then like I said, I own this and this is the piece that I'm trying to purchase right here.
I don't see a problem with this. We can.
We sold that one piece he's talking about, the one that's already, the one not, not this one, the one he's talking about over here, I believe it was sold already. Not that piece.
Yeah, the one to the right of the one he's talking about, he already has.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so that would disconnect his property across that.
Marvin Taylor owned the piece that I just purchased.
Ken, your opinion on this?
It's not something we're going to ever do anything with. It's there, like I said, it's on the south side of Kreitz Creek.
Do you know if that alley's been vacated?
I would have to look at, be kind to see if it still shows there or not.
Do you have plans for the property? I mean...
No, my kids play right there. I mean, it keeps them out of the road. It'd be just nice just to have a piece of property that joins mine.
Can you kind of, and then it'll all connect all your...
Yeah, with my property, it would connect right there.
Makes sense to me.
It would have to be surveyed. As you recall, our last, like this, that was part of the required bid that they would pay for the survey for it.
I don't see anything wrong with it.
I don't either. I have no issue.
You make your motion.
I'll make a motion that we agreed to sell this piece of land adjacent to Kreitz Park to Mr. Pitcher.
No, you cannot. Move that you want to offer it for sale.
Okay.
Because it could be abandoned and then bids would be accepted.
I'll make the motion to offer it for sale.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
So you will need to get a survey then next, I believe, Bob?
He won't have to. That'll be part of the bid. I'll pull up the procedure. I'll get with Sherry tomorrow on the town and we'll put the notice out and send you copies of it and we'll go from there. Probably before your December meeting, we'll probably make it four o'clock the day before, maybe the Friday before, just submit a bid on what you're willing to pay for it. And we'll put in there what a bottom line number is with the survey cost and just go from there. At least it's now going to be offered and you'll be the likely buyer, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, that's it. We'll see you. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
Any heads, application for Phase 1B?
I have, like I said, application for Phase 1B. The amount due this application is $235,066. And I don't know if we need to get this signed by Steve or Jeff. Okay, so I can just leave a copy with you?
Sure. Yeah, I got one. I've got that one.
Oh, yeah.
That's correct.
And then I also had one other thing to talk about. We have a proposed change order for 1B project. It's for a new filter control panel at the industrial park for the backwash process. And this control panel was discontinued at the end of 2022, so it's outdated. And WESA recommends that it replace this part of the project. And we talked about replacing it during design, but the programmer that did Cambridge City's programming before was kind of in the middle of jobs and it didn't make sense to kind of put it in the project then. But now since he's on the team and ready to go and we're already in the industrial park water treatment plant doing work, it makes sense to do this replacement now. And just kind of the advantages of replacing the filter panel now, it's just new and more modern. It matches the equipment in the in-town water treatment plant. It's just easy replacement if things are damaged because once the PLC is discontinued, as some was at the end of 2022, it's a lot harder to get parts for it. And if it fails, then the backwash process won't, it won't be automated anymore. It'll have to be manual until they can get those replacement parts and it might take a long time. The only downside is there is a cost to it, of course. And that cost with the equipment and the programming of the PLC would be around $42,000. And this would be part of the 1B project. And we don't have to make a decision on it tonight, but I could bring the actual proposed change order, or the actual change order next time to sign if you guys do decide that you want to do this change with. And Ken, if you want to add anything, we talked about it.
We talked about last week at the progress meeting and, you know, I felt it's one of those things if we can go ahead and do it that way. We're already upgrading, have I have new SCADA equipment? Might as well get out, get all that equipment, electronic stuff new and have it updated. Look, like you said, if it, if it goes down, getting a part could be very hard to get. You're relying on it if Rob Jefferson would happen to have an old piece laying around somewhere or would know somewhere to get something. So, you know, just to me, it just makes sense to get all that stuff updated out there while we're up, while we're doing it. So it's compatible with the SCADA system then? I probably want to see that change order before you guys access me, to see it. It's not urgent correct as far as right now. It doesn't have to be right now.
No, it doesn't exist right now, yeah.
So. Would you like to see the change order?
Yeah.
If we can see any, be great.
Yeah.
Questions or comments on that? All right, I did anything?
Yep.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. Unfinished business, update on Blythe Properties will start at 14 North Palm Street and update the garden letters that have been sent, 502 East Main, 411, 415 West Front Street, 501, 503 East Shore Street.
Okay, properties on Front Street, a couple days after the last meeting, the initial letter I sent came back to me. So I had a conversation with Bob on what's the next step when that initial letter didn't go. And he told me to first verify that that is where the taxes are being sent to. And so I got a order with them at the county and that is the address they have. And so I composed a letter. Bob wanted to see before I did send it out, just to make sure that everything was okay with it. And he was just telling me that he was okay with it. Well, he just had one little question, which will be an easy fix, so that.
Because you were, the only question, you referred to structures on the properties known for 11 and 415, then later on you talked about a singular building. Are there more than one structure?
There's two houses.
Okay, so are you...
Both, there's a house on each, 411 and 415, there's a house on each one.
Okay, then you need to make that clear that then, if you put a plural at one point, then you need to talk about, and I assume you want both torn down, then make that clear for the rest of it.
You know, so like I said, I have that letter ready where I can make that quick change and put it in the mail tomorrow.
In fact, it may, since it's two separate buildings, I suppose each one could have, you make reference in a hole in the roof of the building. I'm assuming, is that in both or?
There's holes in both of them.
I'm thinking it may even deserve two letters. One because you referred to 411, one to 415. There could arguably be different defenses for each one, not that I'm aware of, but I'd rather be safe and then separate the two letters, although you can send them at the same time to the same people.
So how was the first letter sent out?
Certified.
Certified mail and it came back as not delivered?
There were, there were dates where I'm guessing the mailman broke down when they tried to deliver it, but there's nothing on it says whether she's rejecting it or just wasn't nobody home. But after, after a few times, whatever happens, they send it back.
And I told him, if he sends it to the last known address where you said real estate taxes, fact that they refuse it, don't take it, whatever, kind of change, you can go forward with it. And especially when it's something that this, you can ultimately use self-help, I'd wait until after that hearing time passes next December, or next month's meeting, December. But he's done everything he can at that one on certified mail.
Let's get back to...
Can I ask a question? Can I?
There's more than just two struc, I mean, there's more than one structure.
They both have garages on behind them. That...
I don't know if that makes sense.
I don't know.
That's good, yeah.
Yes, each.
Multiple buildings on each lot then?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, there's a garage for each.
Well, especially...
No, not, not one of the garages. We get it.
You need to clarify then, whatever structure you're talking about on each lot.
The garage isn't in much better shape than the house.
They are.
Yes, great, yes.
So then I would refer to it as the residential home on that particular lot at 411 and another one at 415, just so they were clear.
We just need to specify exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when somebody tries to create an argument, then we...
That's exactly right.
Okay.
So just to be clear, if we send another letter out, certified mail, and it comes back again, we can still move forward?
Yes, you can. And of course, the letter you sent before were the warning letters. It was not the determination of unsafe. It was one that we've worked on that talks about, and I think it was sent a long time ago saying, hey, your condition is going to be, it's going, if you don't do something, we're going to have to go to the point of declaring it unsafe. That's what this letter is. This is the formalized one. And when it's, you have to give them the chance for the hearing, when it's, we actually have to have the hearing, when the remedy that you're asking is to tear it down. And of course, if they don't do it, you can go in there if you decide to at your cost. But to make sure he was sent to the right place and he sends it to the address where they get real estate taxes, that's all you can do.
Are the taxes paid up on it? I mean, is it...
When I, when I talked to more of the county, they didn't say nothing about, you know, they...
It's almost like an abandoned property, it sounds like.
I mean, the only time...
Send a title search on that, Bob? And you just have to find out.
Well, you know, you can. I'm not sure you want to go to the, right now, it's being sent to the last known address. I mean, so a title search is not going to change who they show as current owner.
Right.
Maybe I show a history of it, but they will have the most current owner before they send real estate taxes.
So if he gets the letter out tomorrow or the next day, then the public hearing will still be December's council meeting?
Yeah.
And I also have a letter that also will be going to the 502, 502 West Main, the burned house that by the liquor store.
Is it East Main?
Is it East Main, West Main?
West Main.
I think it's, I think it's 502.
Is it 502? Because I had 502 East Main as the one that you've been wanting from Ken.
But I think it's 502 West Main too. I can't remember for sure.
Yeah, 502 East Main is the one by Subway.
I said, I don't remember. Maybe it's 400, maybe it's 400. But 402 should be addressed.
So we're talking about two different properties, one on East Main, one on West Main?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
We're talking about two different properties and they're each getting?
502 East Main is the one over there that we've had all summer.
But he just, he's talking about one we haven't talked about yet.
This is, this is a house that had caught fire that they kept saying, oh, we're going to tear it down, tear it down, although I've done nothing. So I did... So I did send, you know, I'd sent her upon there a letter too, just like I did the ones on Front Street.
That's 420 West Main, sure.
And I got a letter broke to go to her too on getting that one. That it's being deemed an unsafe building and it'll also, both places will be for a public hearing in December. And.
How about the 14 North Plum, what do we have with that?
I had stopped and talked to the people. They were, they were outside one day when I was driving by and they have cleaned up a lot of the stuff that was in the yard. So I'm giving them a little more time to work on that. And also.
How much more time?
That price looks terrible.
A lot, from what it was, they cleaned a heck of a lot of it up out of there. I mean, they're, they're working hard and hard sitting around in the yard and that's, you know, those have been picked up. Now, there are, there is, there was a car in the yard. I don't know what can be done on that, Richard, if anything.
Is this one they're trying to make a derby car out of or something?
It might have been.
I'll look into that. I'm not sure there, there are some, I think exemptions for cars that are like derby cars and race cars and things, but I'll look into it.
You know, much as some of the other stuff they had were some pallets. You know, pallets, they're stacked up by the fence, you know what, you know. So, but they did get a lot of the stuff picked up that, they did. That was basically sitting right in front of the house. The 502 East Main, I did talk to the lady. I did send her a letter with a fine.
She paid it today.
Did she pay it? And I had talked to her and I'm sort of working with her and I don't know if this is somewhere, maybe Main Street could help her out. Because she did call me and I told her, why didn't you call me to begin with when I first sent you? You know, she, she had back surgery like a year and a half ago and she has trouble getting around. She's ill, having trouble getting anybody to help her in that. And so, you know, there's still some stuff in the yard. I said, well, I said, I won't send another fine. I will talk to some people and I don't know if maybe that's something you guys could be able, maybe help her with getting some, rid of some of that stuff?
Sure.
And that, you know, like I said, just, like I said, you know, contact me when you get these letters and then like, you know, can work with you and maybe contact, contact or get her in with somebody that could help her out. So that's where that one's at. And then I'm also working at one on the other end of Church Street. It's got a bunch of trash. They did get rid of a bunch on heavy trash day. They, because I had talked to her and I told her, I said, take advantage of heavy trash day, get a bunch of that stuff out there and get it picked up, which they did get a bunch picked out. They're still working on cleaning that. And so I'm keeping an eye on that one to see what kind of progress they're making on getting rid of that stuff.
Which one's that again?
That's the one on my.
It's, it's the one.
Down, down, roll it out.
Yes.
Just, uh.
Before the trash.
West of Wall, you can drive along the tracks.
What's that, does?
It'd be four something.
Yeah, 4.
14, probably.
Yeah, 414, something like.
East Church.
Yeah.
West.
West Church.
Did you say something about 501 and 503 Church Street?
I haven't said anything about them yet.
503, he had already, he had taken care of the stuff that was in the alley behind his house.
So that's all correct and doesn't need to be on here anymore?
And 501 is?
501, I sent them a letter. They had, they got two mattresses leaning up against the garage and I had sent them a letter that they need to get rid of them.
You sent that last month?
Sounds like there's been some progress. You also want to add on that, Ken?
No, I mean, the only thing is another one that I am going to be doing some work with. There's a trailer up by the church up there on 650 Vine that is empty. That's not had anybody in it for quite a while and Doug had brought it. And they asked me if there's something they could do, you know, he's tried to buy it, but they don't want to really, never really want to do much with it yet. So I'm looking into that, I'm the same way as on unsafe building. And then I'm also, because I've got verified with the actual owner or an address to send something to. It's a house on East Church Street there on Plum Street, going back to the sewer department. That's on, yeah. And, you know, I've sent letters to, it's a rental. And so that's by, I did clarify also with the county that the address I had as the owner is where they send the taxes to, which is in Texas. So I'm working, putting a letter out to those people too on that own it to do something.
Any questions for Ken?
Sounds like we've made some progress anyhow.
Sounds like it. Stay on it.
Yep.
All right, new business, approval to accept $250 donation from Zion Lutheran Church and $350 donation from, can you separate those?
No, they're both for fire.
Donation, five per, okay. Donation from Walmart for Halloween candy for the fire.
That was, a donation was used at Walmart, the donation was from Dog Foods.
Oh, Dog Foods, okay. To use at Walmart.
Yeah, they sent, they used at Walmart.
Okay.
They were having trouble getting candy this year, so they made cash donations.
So it's a donation, $250 donation from Zion's and $350 from?
From Dog Foods to buy candy at Walmart, okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the $250 from Zion Lutheran Church and the $350 from Dog.
And the $250 was for Christmas lights. By the lights, no on the cable.
I'll second that.
She didn't say that. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I'll give a second.
I do.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Approval for survey of the fire station property.
So I've got that. The, we had talked before about having a pretty high bid for survey. This is survey needed to go forward with the performance venue by Hind there and also look into the question of where the property line is and such. Went to Beals Moore in Richmond and got a quote. Here's, pass those down. And it is significantly lower. I think it's $4,700, $4,600. We do need to get this started right away in order to get the grant. That has to be applied for in January. So I'll bring this forward as a. I guess a motion to go forward with this survey with Beals Moore.
This is about half what the other one was.
Yeah, those were $10,000.
Yeah.
So it's $4,600, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I make a motion, we. Survey the fire station.
Okay.
For the property behind it for $4,600.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Approval for fundraising for performance venue.
So this falls along. We had the public meeting and everybody was there. You saw that there's a gap between what the total cost is and what the funds are available through the help of, I don't know, $68,000 or something like that. And the, the park committee was aware of that. We are doing some things that, you know, we can reduce down to the money available, you know, by, we think that some of the, actually, we don't have hard quotes. We think there's some fluff in there, you know, that some of it's going to naturally come down anyway. But what we'd like to do is do some fundraising with businesses or whatever, or town people, whatever. And if we can raise enough, it'd be awesome if we go ahead and do phase two along with phase one. But that's, that's a big gap there. In the meantime, we're filling the gap between what we have and what we need currently to the current estimate of cost. And what I'm looking for is just, you know, the board to say yes, you know. So be in support of that so that the parks committee can go forward and do some fundraising for that. And that money obviously would just come to the town for the project.
Need a motion.
So then what?
You got that one?
So then it's going to go just in the general fund?
Raise money and donate it to the town if it had, we're on.
Because I don't have a, I wouldn't have a fundraising line item for, if he said the money would just come to the town for the, the lack of that, the money that was, Mike, Mike talked to you about it at that public hearing.
Right, I mean, and it's actually $87,000 short on phase one funding as far as money to date, although that savings on the survey, right, so we're not down.
And, you know.
I think you may need to create a fund if you want to keep it separated, other than, I mean, I suppose they could donate it with the designation of going into whatever budget line item is on parks improvements, that you may be able to just put it there. We can check with state board accounts whether they want a separate fund for the donations to go in there.
Just a restricted fund, Bob, for that.
Edit, that'd be edit, right? The park improvement, yeah.
Oh, you mean, these are the?
That's what I'm asking, it's.
Well, if park improvement is in the edit. We have park repair maintenance and park equipment.
Yeah, but you, okay, but it wouldn't go in as edit money, so you're not going to keep that. You don't want to combine the two of them. That's why I'm thinking under general fund, you have a line item for parks improvements and whether a donation would go to the general fund or application upon that line item or whether you have to have a complete separate fund for these donations. That's what we'll have to check. But it'd be one of those two. It'll either be a separate fund for this particular park improvement or under the line item, park improvements under general fund.
Either way, we're still in motion, can't go in, obviously, so.
Yeah, unless I was going to write a check tomorrow, we'll have it answered.
I'll make a motion that we approve the fundraising for the parks performance venue.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Reports from committee's boards, commissions, any point committees, reports? All right, well, those staff reports, town marshal, Richard. Fire chief.
I got, was contacted by a gentleman last week, was on vacation. He's supposed to contact me again next week. But he was going to talk to me about a project where they, I don't know if your type works, it's early on, I want to get you to know what we're talking about. But it notifies cars, you may have heard about, Richard. It notifies motorists, if a fire truck or an ambulance or a police car is moving in the area, it comes, somebody comes through their radios. And they, they tell them to get out of the way, basically, because they can't hear us. People have their cars, windows rolled up, the radio's on, and they can't hear us coming. So if it's something that, I'm not sure what the costing is or how it works, but we're going to, I guess, we really need to look into. These guys just stay right in the middle of the road when we're coming because they can't hear nothing. I don't know what Richard thought is on that, but.
I, I, that's what I heard, I don't know.
I don't think it's about that, Jeff, just needs.
I'm going to pursue them, get some paperwork on it, find out where it's at because I think it's something that'd be beneficial to everybody in the community.
It just overrides whatever radio signal.
Somehow, wait, just the brief conversation, it just overrides and takes over the radio and says, move over, there's emergency vehicles or.
Interesting.
Yes, I like that.
Override my barrier man, love.
But, well, it may, it's probably sidelined it.
Assuming voice.
There's something big and red behind you, you might want to pull over.
There it is, Jeff.
We're coming along, we're getting, the guys are in park right now, putting the stretch cords up. I have things on, on track for festival. Halloween went well, parade went good, so had no issues. So I think we're moving along.
Yeah, unbelievable, man. Can't believe it's not, it's Thanksgiving.
There it is. Ken?
Just like, you know, leaf pop, leaf pickup is going, so far, so good. The only thing I wanted to just sort of update, you know, I did send you forward the email that we did get Community Crossing grant that we applied for for paving next, that we'll be doing next spring. And just to sort of refresh everybody's memory of what will be getting paved. It'll be Sixth Street from Boundary to Vine Street. Vine Street from Sixth Street to Fifth Street. West Church Street from Green Street to Walnut. Third Street from South Green Street to South Walnut Street. East Church Street from South Gay to South Glenwood Drive. Dale Avenue from Parkway on up around the curve where it becomes county. That got left out on the last one because I, I had just taken over and I didn't know that ours responsibility went on up around the curve. And then also Myers Avenue from East Main to North Second Street.
Ken, you sent an email to all the landowners.
Yeah, because I only got the first two.
Yeah.
I can get it off, I'll get it off of that.
Okay.
Let y'all know.
And that's all I have.
Bob?
Nothing. Not done.
Haven't been, you haven't been to this one?
I have one thing. You guys approved Richard to spend $10,000 of the ARPA money and we went to get the vehicle. You all approved or said that it was okay for him to spend 11, but my minutes reflect 10,000. So since I'm audited on ARPA funds, I probably need to amend that motion and approve for him to use 11,000 instead of 10,000. So I just need a motion.
To increase that from 10,000, 11,000? I'll make that motion to increase from 10,000, 11,000 to use ARPA funds for the purchase of the car.
Second.
Thanks, okay, good.
On favor?
Aye.
Oh, the only thing, will you talk about any health, employee health insurance tonight or wait till next, this meeting?
I think Sarah was going to plan to come the next meeting.
Into December meeting?
Yeah, the December meeting.
Yeah, she said we had time.
Yeah, she said it was.
Yeah, she said if you did the renewal, if you were going to try to go out and go to bid.
Mike?
I'm just touching.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Jim?
Yeah, I have one more thing. We did meet, the eclipse group, we met, it was Mike and Ken and Jeff and Seth was there in place of Richard. We talked to, we had talked amongst ourselves about, you know, how to control the park during the eclipse and if there's any way we could and some, you know. So we left it up to committee to come back with some kind of proposal. What we worked out is, you know, there's difficulties there in keeping people out and not letting them. So what we are proposing is we actually work with Cambridge City Main Street and I've already had the discussion with Cambridge City Main Street to do a lot of the work on this. And that's actually sell spaces for overnight parking there. Some of them would be for RVs if they want to be up around the bowl. And also spaces maybe probably down in the park for tents if they want to, you know, pitch a tent down the long section of the park. Here's a map, I drew up, I have to explain what the colors are, but. So the red on the left is proposed for RV parking. That would only be on top of the bowl. And really, you know, there's trees over there. You see the blue underneath it, there's trees there. We don't want to put them underneath there. We want to mostly open space there. What I don't know is how many we can fit in there and that's all being worked out. Cambridge City Main Street is working on that and eventually we'll have a map. We talked to Jeff, he'd like to have a lane through there. We'd like to have the spots numbered so that if there's any kind of emergency, we know where are those emergency. know where those emergency personnel need to go. So that, that will all have to be detailed. There's a lot of details around this, but what I'm asking for right now is just buy-in from the rest of the, yes, that's what we want to do because there's a lot of work that needs to go into it yet. The blue, that's all daytime parking only, we'll just leave those open. And over on the right, the yellow, we're proposing holding that for camp, for tent campers to park there. And the green on the right is where we propose putting the tents. We would control the number of tents and campers based on, well, the campers would be on sites. We control, I think, the tents, we figure we wouldn't want any more than 40 or 50 over there based on parking spots available and such. And we're still working out what the cost would be, how would we collect that and so on and so forth, and we're working with Main, Cambridge City Main Street would do that and then split the funds with the town as, for them doing all, basically, all the work on policing it and making sure people are in their spots and where they're supposed to be. So I guess what I'm looking for is buy-in, you want to move forward with this plan so we can go ahead and get the details done.
You're making that motion, Mike?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the plans of working with Main Street on setting up the camping and parking sites for the Eclipse coming up next April.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's it.
December 8, is that right? No?
It's not.
Is it?
I thought it was the 11th.
11, 11.
Ready 2.0? This, this will be my last meeting, so I've enjoyed the last eight years and I wish the new council the best of luck going forward, so just let you know. And we just need a motion to adjourn.
I got one other thing, I just. They started on the filter out at the well field today and they cut the bigger holes so you can actually see in that what the, where the new ports are going. And getting that old media out of there, the cells are in a lot better shape than we were anticipating. You can still see the original paint coating that was on the inside. It's not all completely wore off that like we thought it could be, so things are going smooth out there right now so far on getting that done.
So you're saying those funds could be saved there?
Could be because they're not going to have to weld panels or anything up in there over rusted stuff that was rusted away. So, yeah, there could be, be some funds that were being, thinking would have to be used for some rehab work that won't have to be used.
All right.
Thank you, Jeff, for all your years and service that you've put into this.
Appreciate it.
Been appreciative.
Appreciate time you give to the team.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. See a motion to adjourn?
Having said that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.